Oh, thank you. That say Beth?
It should say Beth.
Poor Jamie.
Okay, I think we're ready to start. Welcome to the Sanford Plating Board's meeting for December 7th, 2022. This meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you aren't able to see or hear something. Please note if any Plating Board members have any potential conflicts of interest, of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are any of the for and or against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that any rudeness and civil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, etc., will not be tolerated. If these behaviors occur, the chair at his discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another date. The chair at his discretion will also limit repetitious comments, although it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments, and the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Plating Board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shore land, zoning ordinances, or other relevant regulations. After the board votes on the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeal rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks those attending a meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project they are interested in. After the Plating Board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at its next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Home Office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public hearing. You have the right to see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay. And we don't have any minutes for, I don't believe, Jamie, we don't have any minutes for the last time. Okay. So we'll go right into our agenda. Under hearings and business, under new business, this is file R25-2B. This is major preliminary, major subdivision, and private way. This is for Sam Allen Road, tax map R25, lot 2B. This is an application to develop a 14-lot subdivision with private way and create 12 single-family residential lots on property owned by Pierce Excavation LLC and located on Sam Allen Road. Jamie, do you have any comments to make before we start?
They went before their Site Plan Review Committee yesterday morning. The plans were well thought out and well done. The committee members had a few minor revisions that they need to make to the plans. The consultant agreed to all the requests. I do have a letter from an abutter. I don't know if now is the time to read it, or if you would like it read later, but I do have a letter to read at some point.
Okay, we can do that during a public hearing.
Okay, excellent.
Technical difficulties, hold on. Is the applicant ready to make a presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There we go, okay.
You can take that with you so you don't forget it. I've had that happen before.
Thank you very much.
Let's try that one. Let's see what that does for us. Yeah, let's go with that. Okay. Perfect, all right. Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the delay there. My name is Eric Sari from Altus Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Pierce Excavation LLC. I have Adam Pierce with me here tonight. We're talking about Sam Allen Road. This piece is a 74-acre parcel in the rural residential zone. It used to be part of a gravel pit back in the day. It has a significant section of wetland on the right-hand side on the screen there. The rest of it is all really good sand, obviously. That's where the gravel pit was. It has a current access off of Sam Allen Road down into the pit and a right-of-way going through it to abutting parcels. The project that you see in front of you is a 12-unit, single-family residential cluster subdivision with a 13th lot that is reserved for potential future development. We may look at that in the future. From what I understand, we do need a second access to accomplish that, which we currently do not have. So as of now, it will remain as just a large lot. Could be developed as a house lot if need be, or you may see us in a couple of years for the rest of it. And the 14th lot is the open space, which is about 59 acres. That will be put into conservation. We have no wetland impacts. As Jamie said, we went through technical review on Tuesday, and there were no real issues that came about, very minor stuff, all very addressable. I do have three waiver requests in front of you. They're all very simple. One is the minimum plan scale. Obviously, what we have does meet registry standards, but to show the whole property on one sheet here that you're seeing, I do need a larger scale. The other one is a plan name for private roads. The regulation says it needs to be called out as a private road plan or private right-of-way plan. This has a subdivision component to it, so we need to put that in the plan title. It's semantics, it's splitting hairs, but technically, we do need it. And the third is the plan requirements to have 24-inch trees on the site shown on the existing conditions plan. In this case, part of it was a gravel pit, so obviously, there's no trees. The portion that we are developing is scrub oak, so nothing substantial at all. We don't have any substantial trees until you get farther into the site, which is going to be open space and preserved. So we don't really see the need to go ahead and spend the time and money to survey for 24-inch trees. That's it in a nutshell. As far as permitting, this does require a state permit for, it's a permit by rule in this case, not a full stormwater permit. That was submitted to the state in August. It became effective two weeks later. So that's it for the state. We don't need any DOT or any other DEP approvals, no wetland impacts of any kind, and that's it. So it's in your court. We have you taking questions. Okay. At this point, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Any comments in opposition to the application? Okay, any general comments? I think you do have one, one letter, Jamie?
Chair, Mr. Chair, we did receive an emailed-in letter from a Mr. Robert Wilder. Are they present, or would you like me to read the letter?
In the email, he said he couldn't be present, he had to work.
Okay.
So I pass it on to you to read as the record if you want. Just so the board knows, he is right here. You guys can see the cursor circling around there. Okay.
It says, "Dear Altus Engineering, thank you for your letter of November 22nd, 2022, from the Sanford Plating Department regarding my identification as an abutter to your proposed subdivision at, of a 74-acre lot off Sam Allen Road, map R25, lot 2B. Unfortunately, due to my second shift employment schedule, I am unable to attend the Plating Board public hearing on this project on Wednesday, December 7th, either in person or via Zoom, and respectfully request this correspondence be read into the record at that meeting. As an abutten resident since 1994, I wish to go on record as being very concerned about the 74-acre subdivision and request the project be stopped with immediate effect and not approved to go forward in any way by the City of Sanford Plating Department. The reasons for my concerns are as follows. Negative impact on dozens of new water supply wells on the aquifer that supports the existing neighborhood along with the headwaters of the Maryland River watershed that feeds a federally protected estuary in Wells Main. This is exaggerated by the recent drought conditions in York County. Second, negative impact on dozens of new sewerage systems, leach fields, on that aquifer that supports the headwaters of the Maryland River that feeds a federally protected estuary in Wells. And then, third, negative impact of stormwater runoff from vehicles located in the subdivision driveways on a vernal pool on the subdivision site that supports wildlife, example coyote, bears, deer, hawks, et cetera. I have copied this correspondence to the Welsh National Eskeren Research Reserve due to the potential negative impact this subdivision project could have on the headwaters, in hopes that they support at my request to stop the project and not approve it by the City of Sanford Plating Department. Sincerely, Robert Wilder."
Okay. I don't know if you want to address anything that's in that letter?
I mean, I can, very quickly. As far as wells and septics, there was a hydrologic analysis that was submitted, part of the package. It showed that all the septics would have a, the concentration of nitrogen would be under 5 milligrams per liter at the property line, which is more than twice what, or sorry, half of what the state requires, and it definitely meets the city's standards, which is extremely conservative. As far as stormwater, everything here is infiltrated, so we've got plenty of treatment. And as far as Mr. Wilder himself, he has a well, he has a septic, and he lives in a development in the aquifer zone. So he's guilty of the same things he's accusing us of, which is a little hypocritical in my opinion, but as the documentation shows, that his concerns are not valid in this case. As far as wildlife, he did touch upon that. I did walk the site with IFNW. We saw no evidence of endangered species of any kind.
You haven't been notified by the state of any species that needs protection in that area?
No, no, not at all. We did an IPAC study, which is the Federal Fish and Wildlife. We get the northern long-eared bat, as usual. There were no instances there that they were concerned about. Originally, the IFNW was looking for turtles, and they found no turtle habitat at all. We walked the whole site.
Is there one person that had a comment? Yeah, please come up to the podium, just state your name and...
Kurt Waltersdorf, 162 Sam Allen Road. There was a preliminary hearing or something a few months ago about this, is that right?
That's correct.
And apparently, somebody made a comment about the trails on the property being well-used and reach out to Sanford ATV Club or something. Okay, that, so the right-of-way that goes through that property goes to my land, I'm the abutter on the far end of that property. And that's basically a private road. That's about the only trail on the property. That's never been open to ATVs because of the damage they do. And also, a lot of other people use that for either hunting or snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, walking their dogs, whatever. And I think you found with the Sanford Trail, Rail Trail, that ATV use is very damaging, and it's also incompatible with these other uses. So I just wanted to make it clear that even though you might see ATV tracks on the property, I don't know what Pierce's policy has been regarding ATVs, but in the past, I have not tolerated any ATV activity on my road. I'm the only one that maintains it and gets expensive. All right, that's it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I can address that real quickly. The property is gated. Obviously, the kids find their way around the gate. The intent is to prevent ATV traffic. They're going to find a way in. We did reach out to, I believe it was ATV Club, is that what they were, the snowmobile club? No response. And I also walked the site myself, as I said before, very well-maintained road, nicely done. And we do not want to ruin that with ATVs at all. The intent is to restrict that on this property.
Okay, but is there public access for walking or hunting?
Walking, yeah. What, people, if people in the subdivision can get down in there? Absolutely.
Okay. So it's not restricted access, it's just for ATVs?
Yeah, yeah, we don't intend to allow it. It just doesn't fit with the kind of neighborhood we want to do here.
Okay.
I mean, if some kid has one, I'm sure he's going to do it just like he's doing now, but for the most part, it's not something that we're going to allow in the documents.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from the public? Okay, all right, see you none. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any questions from the Plating Board?
Where is the Maryland River?
Maryland River, can you bring the plan up on the screen?
I don't think I've ever heard of that.
Can you guys see the?
We see what's up there.
Okay, can you put the plan up? Okay. Maryland River is right on this side here. It's actually called out as a stream.
So it's like a marsh?
It's marshy back there, yeah. It does flow, it has some pretty good flow, and eventually, obviously, it gets bigger and bigger as it goes down towards Wells.
Have you heard back from the Welsh National Estereen?
I have not.
Okay.
Did you have a response to something that was raised already?
Well, there's some question about whether that's actually the Maryland River.
Yeah, it might not be.
I was told in the past that that's called Mears Brook. The Maryland River, my understanding, is one that's on my property, which has a strong flow and it's the main flow. So I don't think that that's, it's shown as the Maryland River on Google Earth.
Yeah, it is.
More recent maps.
Yeah.
But I think if you were looking at old maps, the main channel of the Maryland River would be on my property.
Oh, okay.
And that that, I was told, was called Mears Brook, tributary.
Okay. So you believe that it might be mislabeled on this illustration?
I think it might be mislabeled on a lot of the maps.
Yeah, it's not, it's not labeled as the river on the plans in front of you, it's labeled, that's Google. So it's what I get for trusting Google.
Is there, we can make an effort to identify that in the final?
I can do that, sure. It's easy enough, yeah.
Other questions from the Plating Board?
Well, I was just going to say, it's not that their plan is wrong. So, I mean, we would be careful asking them to change their plan when it's the, the...
When they may be copying what's, what's already there.
What's already out there in the public, so.
Yeah.
I don't have an issue either way, I just don't want them changing their plans to not align with what is documented.
We're not calling, we're not calling it out as, anything on the plan just says "stream," and that's it. So it's very, very intentionally vague.
Just put "stream" on there, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions from this end? Anything come out of Site Plan Review that we should bring up, or?
I have a handrail.
There's one more question. We're kind of out of the public hearing now, but is it relating to anything that we've discussed already?
It has something to do with the question of the Friar's Way, the future of Friar's Way.
Friar's Way. Yeah?
I can address it without him coming to the podium. We're showing our right-of-way connecting to the Friar's Way right-of-way. Friar's Way is private right now, but we do not know if we can actually make the physical connection and use that. That's a whole lawyer thing that's above my pay grade. So we are not making connection now, and it may never happen in the future. Is that? Okay.
And that's still forested?
It's got about 75, 80 feet of forest in between the end of our road and Friar's Way itself.
Right, so.
You can't physically...
It doesn't look like a road.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. No one can go through there. Kid in his dirt bike could go through there probably, but not, nobody in a car.
Just a comment to Jamie, as code enforcement, should there be any effort to identify those streams as far as the town, as far as the city's concerned? Make some effort to...
If there is clear data available, yes, but if it's confused data, I would say it's better to leave it as is.
Leave it as is, okay.
Yep.
All right, sounds good. All right, next steps with this? Are we okay just to...
So I have a suggested motion. Are we all done with our discussion?
I think so. Yeah, there's no finding a fact with this, right?
Correct. Preliminary, so no finding a fact.
Okay, so we're just, okay, yeah.
Jack's happy. I made him smile.
We go. Okay, I think we're ready for the motion. I think we're all set.
Okay, suggested motion would be, "The Site Plan Review Committee recommends that the Plating Board accept the information in the December 1st, 2022 summary report. The December 6th, 2022 recommendation to the Plating Board grants the requested waivers and find that the proposed preliminary subdivision application filed number R25-2B to construct a 14-lot subdivision has satisfied the requirements of Article 6 of the subdivision ordinance and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following conditions. In the major final subdivision plan application, provide revised plans that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. The applicant needs to update the roadway width and cross-section to conform to the minimum requirements of 22 feet of pavement for local streets as listed in Chapter 275 Street Design Guidelines of the City of Sanford Ordinance and in Appendix A of the City's Technical Manual to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. B, the applicant should verify that the bottom of the infiltration basins are at least three feet above the seasonal high groundwater table as specified in the DEP Best Management Practices Technical Design Manual to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. C, project phase N needs to be clarified per the satisfaction of the Code Enforcement Officer." Just a note on that, Lot 14 is currently shown as just a potential future Phase 2. We brought up to the point that, that could potentially be another building lot if they never do Phase 2, so they might want to put on the plan potential building lot number 14 or potential Phase 2. That way, it didn't lock them in to it not being able to be built upon if they'd never decided to do the second phase. And then, sorry, I interject, I mixed it up there, but... D, building envelopes need to be shown on recorded subdivision plan per the satisfaction of the Code Enforcement Officer. And then, E, Plating Board standing conditions of approval: 2, performance guarantees; 3, AutoCAD; 4, signed, recruited, recorded, recorded plat; 6, inspection escrow; 7, pre-construction conference; 8, landscaping; and 9, changes to the plan.
Motion to accept.
Okay, and any discussion on the motion? If not, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? I see five in favor, zero opposed. So the motion passes?
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
All right, good luck. Okay, are we ready for the next one? Okay, next item on our agenda is new business. This is file R5-91. This is a major site plan and preliminary major subdivision for 16 Summer Street. This is from map R5, lots 91, 94, and 70. This is an application to redevelop the three dormitory buildings of what was once the Nassauon College campus and is now owned by John Aspar. Nassauon Redevelopment LLC proposes to redevelop the three existing buildings into 83-unit apartment complex. Do you have any background for us on this, Jamie?
The Site Plan Review Committee also reviewed this project yesterday morning. Similar comments, I think the preliminary plan was well, well-thought-out. This one does have a few more conditions coming from it because it's a larger-scale project, but the Site Plan Review Committee members were, were excited to see this project moving forward. There, there, there's a list of conditions, but none of them are earth-shattering.
Sounds good. Um, is the applicant here to present? Okay.
All right, I believe we've got the information up on the screen here.
If you could just give us your names and who you represent.
Absolutely. We've got information on the screen here, if we're able to get it up. All right. So I will take a minute to introduce us. My name is Nate Green, my name is Chris Marshall, this is Nate Green. We are here on behalf of our, our own business, Nassauon Apartments, and we, our real estate company is Green Marsh, so you'll see that throughout the presentation. So I'm going to try to move us forward here. I'll take us through an agenda just to talk through exactly what we're going through tonight. I'll bypass the introduction, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about ourselves here in a, in a few minutes. We'll talk about the project and the partnership that we've already gone through, the discussions we've had, of course, with city staff and others. We'll go through the current status. You can get a little bit of an image of that on the slide that's up on the screen. The, the property is in a rough condition. We'll dive into the engineering plans from there, go into the floor plans, and then we have been discussing a contract zone throughout the process, so we'll go into the details of that, we'll spend a little bit of time on that. So with that, I can dive right in, unless there's anything else Jamie or the Plating Board would like us to cover before we jump in.
No, that's all right.
All right. All right, so I want to start with looking at existing conditions. So you're getting an image here of Phoebes Hall. This is a picture of the back. You can see that the property is a little bit overgrown, and of course, there's boarded-up windows. And on the right, we've shown a breakdown of the, the floor plans and the, the proposal to turn this into, from the existing dormitory building into market-rate apartments, one and two-bedroom apartments. So this plan shows 32 units. So we'll, we'll go into a little bit more detail here and show how this exists in the engineering plans as well, but we'll, we'll start here on Phoebes. You can get a nice image of, of what that looks like at the moment, with the intent, obviously, to bring that back to a more lively condition. Hanscom Hall, so this is the one up at the very top of the hill for anybody who's familiar with the campus. Phoebes Hall is there in the middle. Hanscom is, is up at the top. So again, an image of the, the current condition, and then we've got the layout for one and bedroom, one and two bedrooms to be put in there. Hanscom Hall, we believe, under the current plans, has a capacity for 28 units, so 32 in Phoebes, 28 in Hanscom. And then, lastly, the one that you can see from Summer Street, maybe that everybody's a little bit more familiar with this one, Prior Hussey Hall down at the bottom, similar boarded-up windows, and then we have a plan for 23 units in this building. Again, one and two-bedroom units. Here's a, a bigger image of Prior Hussey down at the bottom. So this, this is just a overview of the three properties included. We obviously have in, on the R5 map, the 91 and 94, which are the existing properties that were owned previously jointly and contain all three of the buildings. We'll get into it in the engineering plans a little bit further, but we've also acquired R570. This is to address a lot of the egress challenges that we knew existed with the site, and obviously, from conversation with the staff, city staff wanted to address that proactively as best as possible, so we think the plan will do a nice job of addressing that. So we'll dig into that in a, in a moment on the engineering plans. So here we are, engineering plans. I'm going to hand it over to Nate, who can take us through what we've got here.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Appreciate the time from the Plating Board. So this is the first time we've been in front of the Plating Board. We've been working with the city now, and Jamie now, for over a year on this project, believe it or not, working through a TIF with the city and working as well on a contract zone for the property. I'm just curious, the Plating Board members, has, have you all seen these buildings? Or have you guys never seen them before?
We've seen pictures of them.
Yeah, yeah, they've basically been, Nassauon College fundamentally went out of business in 1983, and those were the last three buildings built for the college, so they were built in the 60s. So essentially, they've been vacant for 40 years. The previous owner basically cut off access, public access, to the building, so a lot of people just don't even know they exist. Unfortunately, they're in a dire state of decay, and it's really, it's, it's a matter of a couple of years before they're, they're no longer salvageable, so. But anyway, so diving into, this is the existing condition of the site. You can see it's a large parcel of land, and down on the right-hand side, you see that long, skinny building there. That's Prior Hussey, that's the one that you can see from King Street and from Summer Street. That one is in very poor condition. As you turn the corner, you can see some existing parking lots there, and you can see that kind of double-Y-shaped Phoebes Hall. That was built in 68, and once again, it was built by a Frank Lloyd Wright student, so it has some pretty cool architectural history and is very unique, but it's in horrendous condition. And then finally is Hanscom Hall up top, which built in, completed in 1970, was only in service for 13 years. Go ahead. Yeah, so you can hear me a little bit better now? Yeah. So night, the, the top one up top, that's Hanscom, built in 1970 and serviced for 13 years, and in a state of decay at this point. Lots of dead animals and vandalism, and you name it, it's there, so. And then, just on our original application, we didn't own the property yet, but we now own the property, so we have completed the purchase from John Barth, so we own all three parcels at this point. So you can go to the next slide, Chris. So this is basically a wetland map. You can see there's some wetland within the property. Pretty much everything we're doing is existing condition. There's very... There's very little new development at this point. We'll get into what we are developing new in the next one, but you can see the red line is, is basically the twenty-five foot setback along that stream. Our plan, and to the back of the property is the rail trail. So one of the, our goals for this project is, is to really improve public access to it. And we believe it's a phenomenal connector from the rail trail to downtown Springville. So we propose to add walking trails along that stream that will connect the rail trail, open up the property to the public and allow people to walk down to downtown Springville. Go to the next slide. So here is our plan for the redevelopment. You can see it's very minor changes. Obviously there's extreme changes to the buildings. Several million dollars will have to be invested into the buildings to get them up to standards for market rate apartments. And that's something we want to be very clear on. These are going to be market rate apartments, not subsidized housing. So we believe there's a, a very strong need for market rate housing and, in Springville. So, but you can see right here down at the bottom, the parking lot behind Prior Hussey is essentially the same or similar impervious surface that was there before with an old parking lot, just obviously refreshed. And, and then the big change to the property, and this is based on a meeting that Chris and I had with Beth and Jamie and city staff over a year ago now, which was access to the property. As the planning board knows, Summer Street is not the biggest street in Sanford, Springville. It's, you know, could be better. So obviously we want to improve circulation and access. So Chris and I worked with the, a landowner that owned that parcel and we were able to purchase that so we could have a second entrance. And you can see that going behind Phoebes Hall, that parking lot and going out, connecting on a King Street, which city staff agrees with us that that is a much better primary entrance. One of the designs that we incorporate into the project is we wanted to make King Street the main entrance. We wanted to get the majority of traffic going in and out that side, just based on it being a, a little bit bigger street. So you can see, based on where we put it, naturally traffic from Phoebes Hall, which is thirty-two units and Hanscom Hall, which is twenty-eight units, will both use that entrance. And we believe that Prior Hussey, which is the one at the bottom, will use Summer Street, which is twenty-three units. So, you know, essentially thirty percent or so, a little under thirty percent of the apartment unit people will use Summer Street. So.
This is King Street.
Do you want to go to the next slide, Chris? And then this is just zoomed in on that new entrance that we have connecting to King Street. It does cross a little bit of wetlands. It's under four thousand square feet. We are self-reporting to the Army Corps of Engineers and we're working with our engineer, Sifcon, out of Berwick to get that done, but that is impossible just right now. And you can see that basically that's where it comes out on King Street. Next slide. And this is just a little bit more technical detail of the road. It'll have a five-foot sidewalk. Once again, we're really trying to encourage people from the neighborhoods to come and walk through the property because it's been shut down for so long and walk right up through and, and access the rail trail and access the property and, and enjoy it. And then this is just another technical representation of that road. There is a little bit of some interesting topography going along, but it's nothing that we can't get through. And you can, there's not really anything. This is just, one of the things with city staff that the fire department was, obviously, actually this is a good point for the planning board. So we are going to replace the infrastructure. We've taken the recommendation of the water district and Chris and I are actually going after this to do a flow test with hydrants on Kirk Street, just to see what the flow is to, to basically determine where we're going to bring our water in from. But it'll have new infrastructure. The sewer lines will all be, we've been working with Andre of the sewer department and they'll all be redlined with Vortex, which he's approved. New pump station and we'll have separate dedicated water and fire service, new hydrants, all new infrastructure.
The next phase of the presentation is on the contract zone. We're happy to take a moment and pause for questions on this section, or we can just push through and take questions at the end, whatever you prefer.
We can keep going, I guess.
All right.
There's some questions at the end.
I don't think we have anything to do with the contract zone.
Actually, that's going to be for the city council, isn't it?
We just wanted to update you on the status of it. We're, we can bypass that for the sake of time if you'd prefer. It's entirely up to you.
Just take the thirty thousand.
Okay, I'll do the, I'll do the quick version. So I'll, I'll skip through a couple of slides here, but as, as you know, there's a proposal to transform the property. The property is currently zoned for single-family use. Obviously, these are multifamily in an effort to salvage the buildings and obviously make the project economically viable. Contract zone was recommended as, as we are going through the process of planning this. So we, we do have an application in for that right now. We wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about the comprehensive plan and how this works really nicely with the comprehensive plan. We recognize that that does impact the city council mostly, but we, we put together a few key items here on how this interacts with the comprehensive plan. So obviously encouraging development of, of existing built-up areas, infill housing, saving, you know, existing, existing properties, upgrade, upgrading housing. This, this housing needs a lot of upgrading. And specifically called out, it's actually in a few sections in the comprehensive plan. I won't, I won't go through all the sections for the sake of time, but the private redevelopment of the former Nassau College campus is specifically called out in the comprehensive plan. So we're obviously thrilled to see that and that our plans could, could reconcile with that so well. We do think that this is going to be a pretty solid driver of economic activity in the Springville Village as well. It's a, it's a significant increase in housing units in the area. There's a need for, for housing units and then obviously more economic traffic to the Springville Village is, is beneficial. So I will skip over these slides because this is just more of the same. And I think the last thing that we wanted to talk about is obviously the ability to add to some of the recreation in the area by adding these walking paths that connect Springville. Nate mentioned this. Connecting the Summer Street entrance and then obviously by the new road, the King Street entrance directly up to the rail trail. We hope that encourages people rather than going out to Main Street, walking around and connecting to the rail trail there, they'll be able to walk directly from the neighborhoods right up into the rail trail without going over anybody's property or anything like that. So we'll connect those in. It was recommended to us and it sounds like there's been some motion on that since we had our last discussion to mark this as no motorized vehicles on those trails, which makes perfect sense from our perspective. We obviously aren't interested in the, the trails having motorized vehicles going right by the apartment building. So that, that would be a, a major component of that. And for the sake of time, I can skip over that one as well. And I think we can conclude our presentation.
Is one of those properties in the RR zone?
Say that again, sorry?
Is one of the properties in the RR zone?
RR zone.
Rural residential?
I think they're all single family.
Yeah, it's all the single family zone.
All single family? Okay.
And that's why we're doing the contract zone, right? For, to allow that to go forward so they can have multifamily units.
Exactly. Right.
All right. I'll just, I'll declare the public hearing open. If there's any comments on behalf of the application, is anybody who would like to make a comment? Yeah, on behalf of the application?
Maybe, maybe not. I just wanted to say something and it could go either way.
Got a question? Okay. Um, yeah, go ahead.
Give him the mic.
State your name for the record.
My name is Terry Brown. I live on twenty Rankin Street. And last Friday night, they invited us to the old Nassau Library there to talk about this whole thing. And we knew that the property behind there was probably going to be developed eventually. My biggest concern in most of the ones that were there that night, and I think it made a lot of people think, was traffic. Because where that roadway is going to come out to go to King Street, want to make sure I get it right, it's going to be pretty much, the traffic could go right behind and the lights are going to be shining almost in the back of my yacht as they make that turn. That's fair enough. I'm not going to get upset about that. Originally, the paper on April eighth in the Sanford Springville News said that Summer Street was going to be the main entrance. And they did mention about this possibility, this entrance going here too. So in some ways I agree with them that probably it should have the more of the traffic towards that way because it makes more sense to go down there, hang a left, and then right on Rankin Street, right out of Main Street, keep them from going down King Street and onto Kirk. Because that way you'd be running into the same traffic coming around the corner from Summer Street onto Kirk Street. But to get the majority, that higher percentage, I thought maybe sixty, forty percentage? It'd be nice if it was one way, but that ain't going to work. I understand that. So that's my biggest concern is traffic. The rest of it looks pretty good to me. So that's what I think we should think about and how we can kind of keep that. And oh, the one thing I don't know is how many cars are we talking? I know you said how many apartments, but I know some are two bedroom and some are one bedroom. So that, if you could just, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other comments either for the applicant or any comments against the application?
One question.
Okay, okay. Yeah, come up to the, come up to the stand. You can just state your name for the record, too.
Richard Vaughn, live on sixteen Greenway Avenue. You said about wetlands and I just concerned that the Chapman Brook goes down through your property and the, and a branch of that goes in back of some property on Greenway Avenue. Just want to make sure you're not going to disturb that. So all of a sudden, we get flooded because it's happened not there, but on other projects. That's all, that's all concerned about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the public, for and or against, general comments?
Mr. Chair, can I just make a comment? This is Mary Hastings from the Growth Council. I'm on Zoom tonight.
Yes, go ahead.
Great. I, I just want to know that, want everyone to know that we've been working with Chris and Nate on this project alongside Jamie and Beth, that the Growth Council is very excited about this, that we think this is just a great project for, for Sanford. I know people talk about numbers and they get really scared about, you know, eighty-three apartments. It just sounds really, you know, really like a, like a lot. But it's a big piece of property too. And, you know, not all those people are all traveling all at once, all at the same time. So yes, they're going to see a little bit more traffic, but I don't think it's going to be anything, you know, super out of control. We all deal with speeders and people being like that in every neighborhood. So this, I don't think this one would be any different than any other neighborhood. But the Growth Council is really excited. We know that this is going to, you know, just make property values better. We know that there's going to be more services that are going to come in because they are going to want to service these, these apartments and these new families. And we just think that that's awesome for Sanford and for the, the economic development and just the economy in general for Sanford. So I wanted that to be on the, on the notes tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom who would like to comment tonight? I think there's one written comment.
Thank you. I have a written comment from a butter and I have a, a personal comment as well. I just wanted to say I attended the community forum that has been brought up here tonight, last Friday night at the Anderson Learning Center. That, that comment that the gentleman made about traffic was, was said at that meeting as well. Staff also had concerns about it. So one of the conditions of approval is in regard to that and the requirement to, to further the traffic study, to talk with a traffic engineer to decide how to best solve that concern. Just wanted you guys aware that, that we did hear that loud and proud and we are, we are working with them on that.
Okay.
And now I'm going to read a letter from a butter. This, this a butter was also at that community forum and did speak about most of these concerns there as well. To all its concerns, I have attended a small community gathering with Green Mars representatives, Chris Marshall and Nate Green. I wish to thank them for their time and genuine consideration for the community. I did leave with a few unresolved concerns and hopefully will be addressed at the planning board review. I have resided at sixteen King Street, Springville for forty-plus years. My children attended Sanford schools. My backyard is directly adjacent to first dormitory and the raised parking lot. A lot of the brush and tree removal has increased my concern for lack of security, privacy, light and noise pollution, increase that will affect my home living, privacy and backyard, security, safety, and lower my enjoyment of living in Springville. The headlights can also shine across King Street to homeowners on other side of King Street. At the meeting, I had addressed my concern with the developers, no, at the meeting, I had addressed my concern. The developers jokingly stated they will plant a few bushes. Bushes may not be an effective solution to eighty-three new units creating headlights, light pollution, noise pollution, possible safety and security issues. I suggested a quality architecturally appropriate eight-foot solid fence that would provide security and privacy and would block light and noise. This fence would be installed along border of raised parking lot directly adjacent to my backyard. This would not only be an effective solution for myself and other residents of King Street, but would increase privacy and safety and security for residents of the new renovated dormitories. Please verify this is in the plan to be installed as part of the renovation along with verifying the location. The developers stated this could be possible. I have also asked to receive information about the environmental study that was completed. I am particularly concerned about water runoff and the wetlands. I am interested in knowing what guidelines developer needs to follow. I am also interested in knowing what suggestions made by the study the developer will need to complete. What plan is in place to address snow removal and snow storage to avoid water runoff into many yards and wetlands? Thank you for hearing me and addressing my concerns. I know you will responsibly address and handle all of the many questions and concerns related to this renovation. I will appreciate your response. Respectfully, Andrea Luntzer, sixteen King Street, Springville, Maine.
There's no additional public comment? Anybody on Zoom to comment or in the audience? Okay. All right. See you then. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Questions and comments on the planning board? I'm hearing two issues. I think it's the, the environmental impacts, maybe with some water runoff and maybe traffic. I think that's what I'm hearing. I don't know if anybody else is getting something different.
I definitely heard the traffic and the runoff. Those are the two things.
The light issue, is that the same thing that you brought up at the site plan review committee?
That was the issue I brought up at site plan review committee. At the site plan committee, I, I suggested a vegetated buffer because that's what was discussed at the community forum.
Is this the same person?
This is the same person.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there any way we can see that on the, the screen again, that map? The, the area that, that Mrs. Luntzer was talking about?
I believe so.
Is there any way I can use a wand?
You can use the mouse.
Use the mouse? Okay, yeah.
If we zoom in a little bit, it'll help.
So the area Andrea's parcel we're talking about is right here.
So that's her house?
Yep. So we're, we're happy to put that, is it this one right here?
I believe it's that one, yeah.
Yeah. So we're, we're happy to put that fence that she's looking for there. The, so you can see right here, this is an existing parking lot. This parking lot will be removed. So I think as far as her concern for snow storage and runoff, this, this will just be a loam and seed area. So I don't think that's a concern, but we're obviously happy to, to put that fence on that back line there because I, I think her concern is as Because I, I think her concern is as cars come through here, their headlights flash.
Potentially, there's a curve in the road and those lights are gonna be hitting the property as they go by.
Yeah, because it makes that turn and they kinda sweep through her property.
Seems like eight foot's pretty high, though.
Yeah, six foot, is it six foot the general privacy fence? So maybe that would be a compromise we could make.
Eight foot would keep the deer out.
I think there is some decent vegetation there, so we'll just have to look at the existing layout. Because we obviously don't wanna sacrifice any of that that's already acting as some shielding, so I'm sure we can find a path forward there, though.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
At that community forum, I got the opportunity to speak with many of the people that were there. And a lot of the abutters, this property's been vacant for 30 years. The previous owner had lots of aspirations of what he was gonna be doing with the property. And over the years, there's been a lot of discussion over what might happen here. So a lot of them were under the impression that they were gonna cross the wetlands and, and go over to Greenway Ave for an entrance. Maybe build another building on that high spot. So I think a lot of the abutters' concerns, especially the ones that have been there for 40 years, is they truly, they saw the plan for the first time last Friday night. They had them spread out over multiple tables, so everybody could look at them at once. So a lot of them went into it with, with fears of 30 years of, of being told they're gonna do this, or they're gonna do that, or they're gonna fill the wetlands, or we're gonna... I mean, there's been lots of discussion over the years, so I, I think mostly abutters made comments of, it's their first day hearing of this. I wish we, we knew about this sooner. And they don't understand that, that this is really the first step in this phase, really. That it, it's gotta go back to you guys for final, and it's gotta go to council for, for contract zone amendment. And it's actually gonna get changed to urban zone first, and then we're gonna do a contract zone off of urban zone to, to reduce some of the uses. Because our urban zone is, allows a lot of commercial uses that would not work in this neighborhood. We're gonna change it to urban, and then we're gonna reduce some of the allowed uses, again, to protect the neighbors. We didn't wanna go blanketly to urban, because then if a Walmart wanted to go here, they potentially could. So that's why we're doing urban to, to contract, so that we could, we can erase some of those uses that the, the abutters probably wouldn't want. So I, I just wanted to make it known that I think some of the concerns that the abutters have is just based on, on the unknown. I think once they, they see the plan and hear the plan, and a, a lot of people looked at the plans, but plans are hard to read unless you, you know what you're looking at. They, they had red dots down the side of the stream. To somebody, that might be, oh, that's where the road is, and not, not where the stream is, so. I think the, they did an excellent presentation. I think most of the public that was there understood it 100% better when they left. I, I think, I even told them at the, at the, at the meeting, I think they did a good job, are easing some of the fears. And we have, at least one of the abutters was at that meeting. I would hope he would agree with me. But I, I think, I think mostly the abutters are still scared. Change is hard. 83 apartments is, is a lot of units. If, if I lived there, I'd, I'd be nervous. I mean, rightfully so. But I think, I think with more of these meetings, and again, this has to go through several more steps, and more understanding of, of they are trying to protect the wetlands, their major wetlands and the stream are not being altered at all. They did mention for one of the trails, they might have to build a wooden walking bridge over, over the, the stream or for the trail. But again, not motorized, just a, just a little walking bridge like we have on other trails. So I'm, I'm hopeful that the, the abutters, once they grasp the true concept of the now proposal, not what's been said over the last decades, they'll realize this, especially the phase that we're currently reviewing is, is a pretty low impact, with the exception of we are creating 83 units on property that's been vacant for, for decades.
Imagine having college students there 40 years ago, plus years. That must've been a bustling place.
Right.
Probably more so than it might be with apartments.
240 dormitories, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. Some of them are double, a lot of them are doubles, too, so.
I have a question. Did, I wrote down a note. Did you mention that there was going to be another entrance, like a second entrance on King Street?
Yes. Up on the screen now, if we can switch over. You can, you can get a close look at it.
Because now I'm wondering if the abutter... So then...
This doesn't exist today.
Correct. So those properties that abut this proposed entrance, should we give them the same consideration that we would give the abutter who wants the fence? For the exact same reasons, for headlights, noise, et cetera. Just something to consider.
I think our, our intent prior to final is to take a look at where the headlights are gonna be most impactful. Obviously, there's quite a bit of topography in there and lots of forest. So there's probably a few spots we could optimize and put in some specific vegetative cover. I think kinda towards the, I'll use the mouse here and show on the screen if everybody can see. Probably right down here, especially here, although the house is kinda up here on the hill, so that, that might be pretty low impact as well. But we, we can certainly, as we're putting into the plan, the fence here, we can put in kind of optimal places to put in additional vegetative cover. I think that's a good idea.
And is there adequate parking for what you, for the apartments that, that you're proposing? I don't know what the parking is right now, but if you, I'm assuming there's gonna be two designated parking spots per apartment, correct?
Two, eighty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Total, total parking spots, two per unit.
Two per, what, what is our total? I think we have 164 spaces.
And then you have to account for visitors and...
Yeah, we...
A, a large number of the units are one bedrooms, so some of those may obviously accommodate two people, but some of them will accommodate one person. So we believe the two per unit is, is going to accommodate for visitors as well. But there's actually a decent amount of space for additional parking if needed.
Oh, good. And then what is the plan for snow removal?
Yeah, we actually, we actually haven't had, that's something we can update on the engineering plans for final.
I'm, I'm just curious. If you don't know, then that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, but I mean, there's 27 acres, there's a lot of room there, so it's, it's definitely not a concern. I'm sure we'll be able to find a place where we can show the snow storage. And we, if, we just wanna address the gentleman's concerns about Greenaway, too. So we, if you look on the, use your mouse here. So, so Greenaway is...
This is the end of Greenaway here. That's as low as we can go.
And then the stream you're talking about is, is the one that's bordered by the red. So the red is a 25-foot buffer? Oh, yeah, that, that, we were looking at that the other day. Yeah. So, yeah, so that, that drainage ditch is, I believe that's down there, right, Chris? The one where you looked, the beaver one?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. So none of that's gonna be... Right, yeah. Yeah, we looked at that the other day because we heard at the neighborhood meeting, there was like a beaver dam or something. It was, yeah. So none of that is... Yeah, yeah, but we're not gonna change or alter or that's, you know...
Yeah, we should have no impact on that. The, the stormwater plan should take, take that into consideration and make sure that there's no impact, additional runoff from that side of things. There was one other question. Was there further question on that? Sorry, go ahead.
Well, not on that. I do have other questions. I was jotting down as you were talking.
There was one other question from the public I was gonna address about the traffic. So the question was about the proportion of residents who would use each road. So we did put quite a bit of thought into this. I wanted to share some of the thought process behind how we came up with this proposal with our engineering consult. Summer Street obviously is the lower-capacity entrance, so we definitely wanted to create a natural flow towards King Street, but not for everyone. We don't wanna put everyone through there. So this, this road could've taken a couple paths that would've worked out well with the wetland. You can see there's some high land here that probably could've connected in down lower on the, on the driveway. The, the reason we chose to come up here, partly for wetland optimization and partly for creating a, a natural exit for the two upper buildings. So the two upper buildings are about 70% of the overall residency, split pretty evenly, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, with Prior Hussey, which is the other 30%. So that's what we expect the natural flow to be, is about 70% of the volume using the newer road with the better access. King Street, obviously, has better access out on Rankin to Main Street than Summer Street. I think the, the proposal was a 60-40, so I think we'll probably be a little bit heavier on, on King Street than that, but it's, it's pretty close. Just by sheer number of unit, number of bedrooms that have access to each road. So we think that that will actually work as a pretty good solution to manage the traffic flow between those two entrances. But we'd obviously be open, if, if that's not working, to, to modify things with signage or otherwise. And we can put some signage up anyway to, to indicate the flow.
I had another question in regards to public safety and fire trucks. Is about turning radius for a fire truck, to be able to maneuver in, but also be able to maneuver out? But that's just something I wanted to bring up. We don't have to talk about it.
Fire marshal's already covered that.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we met with Patrick at the, the site plan committee yesterday, and he was comfortable with the layout.
Perfect. Excellent.
He did mention, to your point, if the road was any narrower, that he'd wanna see something like that. But he likes, because of the width of the road, he's comfortable with it.
Excellent. And then I think my last, oh no, I had two. One was garbage with smells. I know we had a applicant and that turned into a big issue. But what is the plan for garbage?
Yeah, so we'll have a...
Do you plan on having like dumpsters?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just have onsite dumpsters that are emptied every week.
Oh, that's good. I think that'll be it for my questions. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
They can't rely on city garbage collection anyway, I don't believe, because it's private, multifamily units.
Was it over three units?
So, yeah, they are required to have private trash removal. And then our ordinance requires those dumpsters to be screened and, and protected from view. So on, on the final plan, they'll show where they're at, and we'll, we'll verify that they meet the requirements.
Excellent.
So I had, I had one, one question. It was more about traffic, so might as well beat that, beat that dead horse. So glad to hear that we're, we're asking for a little bit more of a traffic study. I don't know if Matthew, if you have any thoughts, being that these roads, these streets, these feeder streets may not have been built necessarily to handle the volume, just wanna get the engineering department's position on that.
Yeah, they've definitely correctly identified the more suitable road as far as being the main entrance. King, King Street over Summer Street. That is, that's part of the, that's part of what we need to look more into, specifically the Summer Street entrance and just, you know, they've already spoke to the capacity, but maybe even looking into the, the existing condition of it. I'll say they've, they, in the submission, they included the, the traffic study, which spoke to the number of trips. That's kind of the measurement of, and as far as, you know, peak hour trips, residential's by far the, the least, the least impact. In other words, it's not like, I, I think the, the multiplier is actually right around .5. So for, for, for a full DOT traffic study, the, the trigger is 100 peak hour trips. So with 83 units, with the multiplier of .5, it, it's, we're really only talking about like 40 to 50 peak hour trips. So it's nowhere near kind of the, the industry standard for, for a, a full-on study. So we are kind of in the, in a gray area where, you know, it's not necessarily required because they don't hit that 100 peak, peak hour trigger. But, but at the same time, because of the condition and, and the, even the width of, of the roadways that lead into it, we'll just wanna dig into it a little more, which, which they've, they've agreed to. And we're, we're just gonna have to have some further discussions about it.
All right, thank you. The only other thing I had was, if I had to choose between a fence and a vegetated buffer, I would choose a vegetated buffer. But that's a... So, but no, I, I do appreciate the, the, the offer and the willingness to go back and look at kinda what the impact is gonna be to those abutters and, and making it right so that, so that they feel comfortable with where this is gonna go. But I like the looks of it.
Questions from this side?
I saw a lot of the, a lot of the property was going through wetlands. Is there any historical data on like flooding around the roads and stuff like that?
It's a good question. I don't think we've, we've seen historical data. There's no record from the previous owner of floods or issues on, on any of the property. It's quite a bit higher than the, the marshland. I think the only area that would be at risk, it's not on the screen at the moment, but the, the lower parking lot, but that's still some, some feet above the surface of the marsh. So I don't believe there's any, any record of that, but I can't speak with certainty.
Yeah, when they originally developed the property in, in the 60s, I mean, they built it up pretty high versus the wetlands. So like the road coming through is, is probably a good eight feet above the wetlands. And same to the lower part, like Chris mentioned, it's a little bit less, but it's still built up a decent amount. So I think they probably, they did a good job taking that into consideration when they originally did it. Yeah, thank you.
Any questions, Chair, or comments from site plan review? I got one for the trail. Have you communicated with the trails committee at all?
We've communicated with some of the membership, but not the, not formally with the leadership. But we plan to do that as we, as we get closer to help with planning the trail. You know, we expect it'll go along, along the river for the scenic aspect of, of that. And then obviously, that, it goes right up to the rail trail, so that makes it easy from that perspective. But we do intend to get connected. We were, I can't remember the name of the bike shop right here in Springvale Village, but we, we've been in there and connected to, you know, at least start to form a connection with the, the trails committees that there are. I know there's a number of associations that participate in the trail maintenance and construction around town.
So this is private land, but made available to the trails, the city trail system?
That's the intent, yes, especially just to, just to reopen the, the village to the, to the campus, basically.
I guess the word I was looking for was easement. Are you, are you gonna do an easement for that, or?
We'd be open to something like that. Is that something the planning board would appreciate?
I'm just, I'm throwing it out there as an idea. I don't know.
Yeah. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't...
Yeah, we're definitely not opposed to it. I mean, that's the intent of it, is, is for it to be public access. So we're, we're certainly open to that, for sure.
This would be a marked trail then.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Jamie, it's, did the city take some kind of designation that there's no motorized vehicles on city trails? Just wondering, did that happen?
The, the, two, two city council meetings ago, the city council did vote to eliminate all motorized traffic on the rail trail. That is coming back up for rediscussion next city council meeting. Really, the discussion next city council meeting is they inadvertently said all motorized traffic. They, they didn't mean to prohibit snowmobiles. So it's, it's coming back for discussion to, to potentially allow snowmobile traffic. Although the ATV president did go to city council last night and inform the council to be prepared because there is a large amount of people planning on coming to that meeting to try to discuss opening it back up to ATV use.
Just wondering how that would tie in, if this was, became part of the rail, rail trail, how that would affect that?
We would likely leave this portion...
So they could do what they...
They can keep them off. Well...
It'll be a different kind of trail, too, you know, it's not gonna be an eight-foot broad, wide. It's, it's gonna be more like a woods walking trail.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a path. Yeah, exactly.
So with regards to the easement, I'm not sure we would need to push that because there's plenty of trails that cross private property, and it's really an agreement between the trails committee or the organization that manages the trail and the owner. And if they decide to, somewhere down the road, shut it down, that's their right as, as the landowner.
Well, the state protects trails like that. I mean, the trails on our property, as long as I don't put up a piano wire or something.
Yep.
There's liability issues. So, I mean, they could shut it down to anybody. They could post it.
And that's where I was going with that, is I think the easement would be an over-
I'm just throwing it out there.
An overreach.
Just throwing it out there as a point of discussion.
And I didn't take it that you were pushing for it. I just speak my piece on that.
Just trying to figure how this is all going to tie together with the trail system, that's all.
Sure. Yeah, we want it to be an integrated part of Springvale Village, basically, that allows access. There is access to the rail trail now, but it's certainly not as easy to walk out on a busier street, especially for the abutters and the other folks in the neighborhood. This will be much easier access up to the rail trail.
It would be nice to see some consistent policy among all those trails, so you can do the same thing. Not have to stop here and then get on somewhere else to, have to avoid certain restrictions.
Yeah, we'll make a note to get aligned with the trail committees. We know there's a number of people that participate.
Is that Parks and Rec, Jamie?
Parks and Rec does have a hand in the Trails Committee. The Trails Committee is kind of separate from the Parks and Rec, but the Parks and Rec Director does kind of oversee it.
I just have one more thing. Talking about the traffic study, does that need to be put into conditions of approval for most?
It is.
It is? It's in there already?
Yes.
Okay, good. So that traffic study will be conducted?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
Can you hear me? I'd like to make a comment.
Hi, who's this?
William Granger, 16 Rankin Street.
We're outside of the public hearing. Did you have a comment on something that's already been brought up?
Well, I've been trying to get in, but I couldn't get my phone to unmute so I could make the comment, but I'd like to comment on the traffic. They're talking about using Rankin Street.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So they think that Rankin Street is going to be a major outlet for that, but I can tell you that about seven to eight months out of the year, the traffic on 109 is so heavy, you can't get out on 109 at the end of Rankin Street. So most people that live on this side go right down King Street over to 11A so that we can go out by the red light. So I think what you're going to find happening is that when these people start living there, they're going to say they can't get out on Rankin Street either, so the traffic is going to go back out Summer Street, whether you like it or not.
Can we bring that back up on the screen, the map?
I had a similar thought of Rankin when it butts 109 of maybe a traffic light situation.
Well, that might be, that would be a-
I don't know if that's-
That's a map question.
Yeah, just to help with.
I just wanted to voice that because that is going to be a major concern.
Yeah, thank you.
What would you guys' question?
So Rankin Street, when it comes up to 109, due to the heavy traffic on 109, especially during peak hours, that would cause a backflow of the traffic to kind of skirt the backway to go to 11A to that traffic light. And I, it's funny, he brought this up because I had a similar thought, that I'm very curious to see how the traffic report plays out because there may possibly need a traffic light at Rankin in 109 to help with traffic.
That's in DOT, isn't it?
Yeah.
It'd be within urban compact, so it'd be under our jurisdiction. But as far, yeah, as far as, you know, anything regarding traffic lights or speed limits or anything like that, we'd have to go through DOT. But I wouldn't suspect, again, with a residential development of this size and the peak trips that we're talking about, I wouldn't suspect that that would trigger any type of, or warrant, I should say. I think that's kind of the technical term, is warrant any type of traffic control devices.
Is that potentially something that could come out of a traffic study?
Potentially, yeah. Yep. Again, a full-on DOT traffic study isn't required in this situation. That doesn't mean that part of the conditions, you know, we're asking that they look into it more. But, so, again, it's kind of a gray area as far as, you know, how far this traffic study reaches, but-
I think we might be within reason to ask for that, though, given the concerns over the traffic.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree.
Yeah, we can see that on the screen now, Rankin Street.
Yeah, I just, I pulled up a Microsoft map here. So it looks, it sounds like, if everybody can see my mouse, the connection would be here. The thought process is you'd take a left on King Street, a right on Rankin, and you'd connect to 109 here. I think the caller is indicating that people might be motivated to take a right on King Street and then a left on Kirk.
I think you said go all the way out to-
Good on Brady.
Kirk and then take a right there.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so King to Brady.
No, I think what I was saying is they'll probably go right by, what we do now in the summertime is because the traffic is so heavy on 109 for all the late traffic that you can't get out. I mean, you could sit there for 15 minutes waiting to get out, and you're not going to get out. So we go right down King Street, go all the way back out to 11A, down by the old Nassau College, by the Anderson Learning Center, out that road, and then take a left on 11A to go out to the red light. And that's about the only way you can get out of here in the summertime.
That's if you're-
It doesn't matter what time of day it is. It's heavy traffic for the late traffic here in the summer.
That's if you're taking a left?
That's if you're taking a left or a right. It doesn't matter. Traffic is heavy on 109 at the end of Rankin Street in the summer.
Again, I think that's probably where the benefit of the traffic study is going to answer that question.
Sure, yeah, and I-
I think a traffic study would, it should be done there because that's going to be, if you're thinking people are going to use these roads to avoid going out the other road there from the entrance, I think you're going to find out your sadly mistake. Because as soon as they find out they can't get out, they're not going to go that way.
What I was going to say, I think the, almost the bigger concern is just the, as I mentioned before, with Summer Street, the width and the condition. I think that's going to be the more, more of the focus as far as avoiding that entrance. If they go out on King Street and take a right, you know, whether they go Kirk or Bradine or anything like that, those streets are much more suited to handle that sort of, that sort of traffic.
Oh, I agree with that, but I'm just saying that if they think they're going to go out Rankin Street, that they're going to utilize that way, that that's probably not going to happen. So not as much as you would think they would, is what I'm getting at. Just from living here for 32 years, I already know.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments on the planning board? Are we okay for now? What's the next steps here?
Okay, I have a suggested motion. When we get to the way it was worded for the traffic study, because again, we were not calling out for a full traffic study. If you guys want me to change it when we get there, please let me know.
I think that's what we need to do.
You want me to change it to a full traffic study? Okay.
Can I make, can I make a quick comment on the full traffic study? So we've been in preliminary talks about this for a year, and the biggest questions that we needed answered traffic-wise was, like Matt mentioned, that Summer Street is not an adequate street, and that's simply because of the size of it. So the question mark is not really how much traffic is going to be increased. It was the condition of the street. So that's why we proposed a second entrance. And then just backing up to get a little more data in relation to that, we had the, we used the DOT method to figure out the peak trips, and 100 trips is what is, qualifies for a real traffic study. And this was less, the peak trips was less than half of that. So I feel like we've already kind of answered some of the traffic questions, and I'm not sure what a full-on traffic study, I'm not sure what questions we're trying to answer with that study, I guess.
I think what they're getting at is overflow traffic is spilling out on the Main Street. I think they're concerned about increased wait times. I think we just need a definitive answer, and I think a study is going to give us that information.
Okay. Can that, can they give us an answer like that? I mean, you can put up signs all over the place, but you can't fix stupid.
I believe Mr. Preventure would be the right person to answer that. I mean, traffic studies, as was mentioned by both Matt and the applicants, they're more designed for higher flow rates. So I guess, Matt, what would a full traffic study show that might help alleviate people's fears?
Yeah, honestly, it has more to do with volume. And so the way things are ranked are kind of on a level of service. So basically, it would be, you know, existing versus, versus, or, you know, pre-development versus post-development, kind of like with drainage. But with traffic, if there's already an intersection in the area that's at a level of service D, which isn't great, I wouldn't suspect this number of, you know, the added traffic of this residential development, I wouldn't expect that would change any type of level of service anywhere near it. Obviously, that, I don't know, I haven't run the numbers, but, or, you know, or done the counts or anything like that. But the reason why that trigger is at 100 peak hour trips is because that's where you see kind of some shifts in level of service at certain intersections. With 50, I mean, it's, you know, it's half, so more than likely it wouldn't, wouldn't bear fruit. But again, there's no telling without actually doing the counts and the numbers and-
I think it would be instrumental, though, maybe in helping to decide whether you need another street signal or maybe some other calming measures for traffic.
Can a traffic study tell you which way people are going to drive on which streets?
No, no, certainly not. And I think that's where I was kind of going as far as having some more discussions with their traffic engineer, in that there may be some, I guess I'll call them alternative, you know, alternative ways of directing people, you know. I mentioned yesterday at the meeting, some internal signage as far as, you know, this way to the Main Street or, you know, whatever, just to kind of get it in people's minds that, oh, I should be going this way, you know. There's also some very unfavorable things that you could do, such as speed bumps or something, for people to avoid going a certain way. It's certainly not, that would not be a recommendation on a street, but, you know, considering this is a driveway, if you really wanted to force people in a certain direction, that would be a possibility. I'm not saying, I'm not recommending it in this case. It's just purely an example of just kind of those alternate, you know, solutions.
We had brainstormed this a little bit after Site Plan Review yesterday, too, because we do, we obviously want to address this without taking on the extra expense of further traffic study. The, if we can pull up the map one more time, apologies on continuing to switch this back and forth on the screen. This section here, it comes back up for everybody to see. So Hanscom and Forbes up at the top, Prior Hussey down here at the bottom. This is the Summer Street access. This is the King Street access over here. Just a reminder, the natural flow out of this parking lot, we think, is going to go directly, rather than popping out of this parking lot, coming down to Summer Street. People are going to exit directly out of here. I can see the caller's point about folks perhaps coming out of this lot, staying straight on Summer Street. One of the things we had brainstormed, and, you know, perhaps this can be a remedy if we overburden Summer Street after construction, would be to put in a couple of speed bumps here, because I certainly know if I was exiting from even this parking lot, I would be not excited to go over a couple of speed bumps here to exit on Summer Street, and that would probably incentivize me to take King Street, whether I was planning to take a left or a right out of here, which then, of course, keeps the burden on Summer Street much lower.
I know from past projects, I don't think the Highway Department is a fan of speed bumps, certainly when it comes to snow plowing, but-
Yeah, again, this is a, this is considered a private driveway. It's, yeah, it's not even a private road. It's strictly just a commercial driveway at this point.
I just want to make another point-
I have another question about your traffic flow, you said your numbers. Was that taken into consideration, the existing neighborhoods that already use these roads, like King Street, Rankin Street, Joy Street, and then the other side of 11A and all the people that come out of those roads, and then the roads that, and the people that come down 202 down 11A to that same traffic light? Was that taken all that into consideration, too?
Everybody in Sanford?
Yeah, I can respond to that, yeah. So like Matt mentioned, the way the traffic studies work is they take the current flow, and then they add on the additional based on the development. And I just kind of want to put these numbers in people's heads. So if we, if we look at 109 in the morning, we think about how many cars go by in an hour. So if we've got peak trips of 50-
And this is actually 42, I think?
Is it? 42, and that's absolute peak amount of trips coming from this site. 42, and we've got it divided at 70 percent coming down King and 30 percent coming down Summer Street, then we've got basically what-
30, 30 on King, if we're able to maintain that, which I think we can take the measures to do so.
So if you, so if the traffic study says, okay, there's, you know, 5,000 cars that drive down 109 in an hour in peak time, and we're adding 30, it's a negligible impact to the road and the infrastructure. And so those are kind of the numbers we're talking about when we're talking about the traffic impact.
So, I mean, my thought on this, and on this, I guess I'm not in favor of a full traffic study, because it's not going to, it's not going to change the way people are going to drive. People are going to go find the path of least resistance. I think that they've done a great job in routing traffic within the site to direct it towards a road that can handle it better. My comment earlier was just to more understand what King Street looked like, what the condition was. It sounds like that is the better street to have people route down through. And then looking at the higher level map, where you can see the neighborhood, there's a lot more outlets there. There's a lot, lot of place for that pressure to be relieved than Summer Street, which just basically dumps out onto-
You're talking about 30 cars versus 5,000?
Right. It's-
Doesn't register.
Yeah. I'd like to see it explored a little more, like we're talking about, just that we feel comfortable with as we go forward, but I'm not looking to, to add burden where I don't think it's going to add any value.
I'm just, I'm hearing a lot of question marks. I'm hearing a lot of people say, I don't know. And that's usually when you hear, I don't know, that means you need more information.
But they have to talk to their traffic engineer, correct?
My suggested motion does talk about discussion with their traffic engineer and Mr. Preventure to try to help figure out the best solution to this concern.
What's a full-blown traffic study cost?
10 to 15,000.
How much?
10 to 15,000.
You're looking at spending millions to-
11 million?
I won't get into the economics too much, but the margins are relatively thin for a project like this. You know, we've obviously been working with the town on how to, how to make this project work to save those buildings and not, you know, have them to continue to break down the way they are. So, yeah, there's a big budget, but the margin's a very, very small portion of that.
Right. So in the suggested motion, which Jamie's gentleman at the foot to get to, it does talk about working with the engineering to make sure that they're, they're okay with whatever comes out of that discussion between the traffic engineer. So there are words in there to make sure staff is satisfied with those results as a condition.
It's within our purview to ask for that if we think it's necessary. I mean, the $10,000 is not, not a planning board consideration. I mean, I just, I just want to make sure we have the right information.
Yeah, I'm looking at it more from, what is it going to tell us that we don't know? Or what's it going to do? What are the recommendations that's going to come out of a traffic study for 50 cars or 43 cars?
They already did a study, right?
Yeah, that's, I guess, the thing that I'm struggling with is what information that we don't have now, will we get? Because I think that the key information was how many cars and how can we best distribute the cars through the neighborhood adequately? And we're happy to talk with our traffic engineer and talk with Matt and town staff and, but I think we've already explored this and gotten, gotten some pretty good solutions. But like we discussed with Jamie and Matt, we're happy to keep pushing that along and getting a little more information.
If we can get some more answers to these questions, that would be good. If we can get some more answers to these questions, that would be good. Okay, is there anything else that we need to cover? No, okay.
Okay. The Site Plan Review Committee recommends the planning board accept the information in the December 1, 2022 summary report and December 7, 2022 recommendation to the planning board, grants requested waivers, and finds that the application for file R5-70, R5-91, and R5-94 to construct 83 market-rate one- and two-bedroom apartments has satisfied the requirements of Article 6 of the subdivision ordinance and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. In the major final subdivision plan application, provide revised plans that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, the applicant completes the required zoning change per the satisfaction of the City of Sanford. The applicant provide the proposed driveway separation and available site distance on the plans per the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. C, the applicant clarifies in the typical pavement section applies for existing paved areas slash drives per the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. If a different method slash buildup is proposed for existing paved areas, this will be specified per the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. D, the applicant will add appropriate sign locations, specification, and details for traffic control to the plans to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. Traffic control and specific intersections will be incorporated to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. Locations, specs, and details for crosswalks, ADA tip downs will be added to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. A drainage analysis shall win peak rates of runoff for the post-development condition equal to or less than rates for the pre-developed condition will be provided to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. Locations, specs, and details for proposed stormwater best management practices will be provided in line with DEP guidance to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. Copies of applications and approval materials from outside agencies, such as DEP, ACOE, et cetera, will be provided to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. Two additional handicap spaces will be provided and shown on the plan per the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer. Knocked boxes will be shown on the site plan per the satisfaction of the Fire Marshal, Sanford Fire Marshal. The water main size will be increased to eight inch. Actually, I apologize, I'm going to, I'm going to strike that one. No, I'm not going to strike that one, sorry. L, the water main size will be increased to eight inch at a minimum to provide enough flow for the hydrants, sprinkler systems, and domestic services to the satisfaction of the Water District and Sanford Fire Marshal.
They have to do a water test, right?
The applicant, I'm going to strike what is shown on the draft as number M. That is, that has been erased. So what was N, what is now M? The applicant will work with the Sanford Water District, Sanford Fire Marshal, and possibly a fire protection engineer to verify the existing six-inch service provides adequate flow and door pressure for domestic and fire protection requirements. That replaced the M. There was lots of discussion about if they were going to have to upsize the existing water main in Summer Street and/or possibly looping it over the new road over to King Street to provide enough flow. So they went back and forth for quite some time. We left it that they would, they're going to do a flow test on the existing lines and determine if that connection is actually required. The applicant will add vegetated buffers and or fences along boundary lines of abutten property owners to mitigate concerns of headlights shining into their homes to the satisfaction of the code enforcement officer. I left that one slightly loose. I didn't specify map and lot numbers of the the one abutter because, as was brought up, there might need to be more than one. So I I left it a little bit loose so that if we find out we need more than one, they they will do it. The traffic, I'm sorry, the applicants will provide documentation from their traffic engineer that the existing local streets that provide access to the proposed subdivision can safely provide the additional capacity for the proposed 83 new residential dwelling units to the satisfaction of the Assistant City Engineer. So that's the way I worded it, so that really they'll work back and forth with their traffic engineer and Matt and Matt, both, both city engineers, to to try to find the best solution to that, the concerns. Because, again, multiple abutters brought the concern up and multiple staff people had the same concerns.
So is there any possibility that could be further studies in the future as part of this, this project moves forward? Or is this?
Depending on the the conversation, it 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 could require lots of things. I, again, I left it a little bit loose so that it wasn't they had to do a full study, they didn't have to do nothing. Basically, they have to work together to find a solution that will then come back to you guys in the final, and and they'll have to explain to you what solution they came up with and how they got there. And that was all, Mr. Chair.
That's all?
I opposed to accept.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, you mentioned the zone change, but what about the contract?
So the zone change is one in the same as the contract zone. So a contract zone is also considered a zone change, so that that's all incorporated in that one.
Well, you were talking from single family to.
So it's, it's actually two zone changes is ultimately what we're going to do at the same time.
All right, so that's included, just, I just wanted to clarify for that.
And the contract zone is really to prevent the type of development we're not looking to have, right? The urban change is enough to make this happen, correct?
Right, the contract zone will keep Walmart out of there.
Right.
And and I use Walmart as a very bad example, but.
Hopefully, they're out listening.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, I see five hands, none opposed. So this can move forward.
Thank you so much.
All right, appreciate the time.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck, guys. Long time coming.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, next item, our general old business file, K18-8 is going to remain on the table because it's not ready to move forward yet. And old business, as the mineral extraction discussion, that's going to take place in January. And other business, discussion of planning board calendar for 2023 and bylaws. Did anybody come up with anything that they want to share on the bylaws? I didn't see any notes that were forwarded to me, so I'm assuming everybody's okay with it.
I didn't read the bylaws, but Diane had asked the mayor for leave of absence.
She's resigned.
I know that. I don't know if that's something that needs to be included. If somebody needs a leave of absence, they don't have to go to the mayor.
So that might be something we need to add in?
Yeah, I don't, you know.
Not sure what the language is going to look like, but.
That's a good point, Jack. That's a good point.
Because the city manager was going to put it on the council agenda, I guess, that talked them out of it.
Because you don't have to go to the mayor to resign.
No.
No, she wanted a leave of absence because her dad was.
Oh, no, I understand. But I'm thinking, if you don't have to go to the mayor to resign, then why are you going for absence?
Because she talks to the mayor quite frequently.
Diane has officially resigned at this point.
She has, yes.
The city council at last night's meeting accepted the resignation of Diane Connolly and also accepted the resignation of Joe Handslip.
So we'll have two vacancies as of right now. And there'll be five vacancies, actually, there'll be five vacancies that need to be filled on the planning board.
Oh, I was so sorry, I thought that.
Five, yep. So maybe that's something we can take up at the first, well, the planning board, whoever it's going to be, can take it up at the first meeting in January. Maybe an amendment to the bylaws, or maybe that's just an amendment to the city policy. Maybe the city council will apply it as amendment to all, all committees, I don't know.
Well, what really sucks about the whole volunteering for a board is like what happened to Jase. He found out he wasn't reappointed from Diane. And somebody on the council or the city manager should call people and say, listen, we've got your application, but we're not going to reappoint you. But thank you for volunteering, we have enough people. I mean, that's just the way things usually work.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I mean, the same thing happened to me a number of years ago. I found out from other people that I wasn't reappointed.
And they don't, there's not much notice between the council decision and the planning board meeting the next day.
Well, Diane looked at the council agenda, which is in there. She saw that Jase wasn't reappointed, so she called Jase to tell him. It's just a shitty way to handle it.
Oh, I agree.
So keep us on track before we get to communications. Bylaws, are we going to hold off?
I say, we hold off.
But we're just, this is just to collect some comments. This is just comments, because that's what we agreed to do in the last meeting. We're going to collect comments and see if there's anything.
Yeah, I think we have to read them.
Yeah.
Just to see what what's in there. I don't know if there's anything in there, but I don't remember anything about a leave of absence, but.
I don't think there's anything in there about leave of absence. And let's, I mean, obviously, it's a hot thing right now with, you know, we have to remember, have to deal with stuff. And not to sound insensitive, but at what point does a leave of absence just mean step away and take care of your stuff? Because, you know, here's the challenge, like, we, we had many meetings, it was only four of us here.
Yep.
And that makes running a board very difficult, especially when our bylaws says four and now the charter says four.
Makes it really hard for the applicant.
Right. So just something to chew on. It's kind of one of those things nobody wants to really talk about, but.
It's a discussion that we have to have.
I think it's we have to talk about it and also the, you know, making sure we have people that say they're going to be here.
What is it, three strikes and you're out, kind of? That's what it is, yeah. Well, it's a review, it's not a mandatory. It's a, it's based on attendance. If you're, I think it was a number something like 70%, I think, and then you remove it automatically, the way it is in our bylaws. 70% is quite a bit.
Because honestly, the bylaws, those are our biggest, those are the biggest issues we have as a board, I think.
Yeah.
And obviously, it's volunteer board, and we have other responsibilities outside.
Well, if you get like.
Sometimes things don't work out.
A family member who's really sick, you can always say, you know, I'm going to, I'm not going to be there for the next couple of meetings.
Yep.
I mean, with notice, that's different than just not showing up without notice.
Right.
I think there's allowance for that in the bylaws, too.
But she asked for a leave of absence, I don't know why, but.
So anyway, it's just, that's, just, just some thoughts on that.
I would say the future planning board, whoever that's going to be, can have that discussion, I guess, what they, whatever they want to adopt in January. But that'll be on your first meeting in January. You'll have to adopt that going forward.
And what about the volume?
Well, for at least a few more minutes. Calendar for 2023, I think there was only one day conflict that I saw. That was the first week in July. Because I think July 5 is going to be a Wednesday, and July 4 is a Tuesday. So you're not going to have a site plan meeting before June. So maybe that meeting's not going to go forward. You might want to consider postponing that meeting or just not having it.
Unless you want to save it for mineral extraction conversation?
Oh, yes.
Nope.
I say, I don't wish to talk about it.
Nope. I'm not going to be talking about it.
Did you all read the article in the Portland Press?
I couldn't read all of it because I don't subscribe to the Portland Press, Harold.
Oh, that shut you off?
You did.
I have it downstairs.
Can you just email it to us? Do you have a PDF?
I have the PDF, so I didn't email it.
That might be easier. Yeah.
Anybody who wants a paper copy, I have one right in front of mine.
They brought up phasing again.
To get us off the mineral extraction, I apologize. I do have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, we went on to schedule the extraction.
I guess I have a comment and a question. Obviously, Beth is not here. Beth is on a temporary medical leave of absence.
Is she okay?
Yep.
Oh, Christ, she wasn't on Zoom. Because she was yesterday morning.
Actually, she was on Zoom only because we use her Zoom account for that. So she was what she was. So just just for clarification's sake, I am acting planning director as of right now. So you guys are stuck with me for a month or whatever Beth is is out for. If if you have any questions, I will do the best I can to to assist. I'll be 100% honest, I've never been a planning director before.
You did fantastic.
I, I've obviously intimately a part of this process, primarily behind the scenes. So you guys have seen me and heard me on Zoom. Some of us have seen me at Texas Roadhouse. But, sorry, I got to look at. Any any questions or concerns in the next month? If you could just relay them to me instead of Beth. We're, we're trying to let Beth recover safely at home and and not interrupt her with with this business. I personally feel, I I don't know what the ailments are, to be 100% honest. But I I feel stress kills, and I feel she's under an immense amount of stress with everything going on. So I have committed to to try to take everything off of her plate for whatever time is necessary to to hopefully get her to to feel better.
So are you rewriting the mineral extraction ordinance?
Yep. Depending on how long she decides it's going to take to recover from whatever ailment she might have, that that might become part of my duties. I am hopeful, this is a short-lived recovery, and and she can continue down the path that probably put her there. But I I am prepared to do what is necessary. So the city, city manager does want the mineral extraction to keep going. So if the beginning of January, mid-January, Beth is not here, I'll, I'll grab her by the horns and and see what we can do. I have been part of that process now for.
Oh, too long.
Four or five years, whatever it's been. So I, I, I am comfortable in taking it if I need to.
I guess probably not much is going to happen the first meeting in January. That's going to be largely organizational, and if there's new people, they're going to need time to.
We do have quite a bit of stuff that might need to come in January. The the good news is Stenton Trust is actively inquiring about starting their application process. And they are requesting to try to get on in January sometimes, so. We have not received a formal application. We have received questions on on how to get to that point. We, we held a pre-app with them months ago, so that step is done. So there is still some exciting stuff on the horizon.
Are they opening apartments?
Yep. A little bit of commercial on the first floor, primarily apartments.
Will we?
My, my question is, is, I I haven't been part of the discussion, but I believe Beth was trying to create a holiday party or Christmas party. I don't know what you guys call it. Is that still on?
Yeah, that's on.
As far as I know, I worked with them today, so as you guys tell me, no. So far, we only have 12 people.
So I I will now officially add my name to the list.
You got to be there.
That's the 16th.
21st.
Oh, it's the 21st.
James, Brian.
I didn't say that.
Oh, I thought it mixed up. No, I can be there. I was actually at a band concert on the 14th, so I thought that. Count me in.
I'll be there.
So we're all set on the calendar for, I mean, that's the only date conflict I saw for 2023 was July. I think everything else, good.
So I guess my only other comment is, I'm not sure which three of you are are due up in January, but but you're not allowed to to resign. You have to submit your paperwork.
I could just stop showing up.
Or or can we, in lieu of reapplying, can we just stay on?
Well, I think you have to do the application.
Our term, my term is up.
We didn't apply mine for my.
My term is up the end of December. So if I don't reapply. Our term, my term is up, my term is up the end of December, so if I don't reapply, it should, I lost.
But, but again, that's not allowed.
Scenario.
Well, yeah, nobody, if nobody gets appointed, then I have to come back, I did, I did apply, I don't know why, but.
You like punishment, that's why.
Yeah.
I said that, I was like, am I a glutton for punishment?
It is interesting.
I didn't hear you say that.
So the next, sorry, there's no more discussion, I guess I'll try to narrow it down here, no more discussion on the calendar or bylaws right now?
Jamie, welcome.
Thank you.
Happy to have you.
I'm going to take that, I'm going to take that as a no.
What?
No more discussion on the calendar or bylaws, I got to narrow it down.
Nope, nope, I'm.
Because it's getting late.
It's getting late.
Okay. Any communication from anybody else on the group?
I haven't already had.
I'm sorry, I spoke out of turn.
That's okay.
I'm learning.
I would just say, I, I talked to Beth last night, and she's not going to be at the holiday gathering, obviously, but she told me what was going on, but she does plan on being here in January, probably first meeting in January, barring anything else happens. Okay, are we all set?
All set.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment?